Good evening, everyone, and I want to thank all of you for joining us tonight for the Mills River Planning Board meeting. I'm now calling this meeting to order, and if you will all please join me in standing for our pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As we enter into our meeting, I'd like to ask if there are any adjustments or additions to our agenda for tonight. Do we have anything, Daniel? Okay, so all of the planning board members should have received a copy of the minutes from our March 16th meeting. You've had a chance to look over those for accuracy. If you do not see anything that needs to be changed, I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
A second.
Now we're going to enter into our time of public comment. I know that we have received some public comment via email. And Arlie, I'm assuming we have several signed up for public comment as well. Okay, so I think what we'll do first is whoever's going to read the electronic public comment will do those first. And then we'll just go down the list of those who signed up for public comment. Tonight, because of the volume that we are expecting to handle, public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. Daniel will be, or is it Arlie, one of them will be timing that and will let you know when your time is up. So we can get through, make sure everyone has a chance to speak. Okay, so go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have several public comments that came in via email on the info@mill river.org address, so I'm going to read these quickly. We have an email received today, ninety, with the subject line of ninety-plus workforce housing. This is from Jackie Hannigan, and he reads, "I live at 290 Banner Farm Road and would just be devastated without this housing unit on Banner Farm Road. I love my house in the area and would hate to have to move because of additional traffic, schooling taxes, which would soon follow, and most of all, to lose part of my front yard with my bedroom and continuous traffic I hear in house. This was supposed to be my forever home. Please, let's not vote for this." Jay Hannigan. The next item we have, subject line, Planning Board for 2021, from Chris Ware. "As a resident property owner and business owner in the town of Mills River, I wanted to express my concern with the proposal to add ninety, quote, 'workforce' housing units on Banner Farm Road. In my opinion, the town of Mills River is not prepared to accommodate ninety more homes to be developed on Banner Farm. The Henderson County Sheriff's Office is doing the best they can to keep up with the increase in crime in this town, but they need more support. The schools are doing the best they can with classrooms filled as they are now, and they need more support. Traffic is already problematic in the area at school time. We, as a town, have a, quote, 'problem' properties throughout our community that are not being dealt with, that require the town's attention, which are not being actively addressed and resolved. I don't feel, as a community or a town, that we are in a position to have more houses until we address the problems we have, and then, and the need for more policing at larger schools, et cetera. We cannot allow these developments to continue to be put here, then figure out how we're going to support them." Regards, Chris Ware. Next, we have an email, subject line, Public Comment for 2021. This is from Robert Hendrickson. "Good evening. My comments tonight are twofold. First, after numerous attempts to make inquiries regarding development in Mills River, we still have yet to receive responses to them. Nearly a month has elapsed since our concerns were first voiced. What type of timeline should we expect for responses from our town representatives in regards to development or other concerns? Second, changes were made to an adjacent property without notification to us. These changes greatly affect our daily lives. We missed the opportunity to appeal due to not knowing what was happening. We would like to know about these issues in a timely manner in order to advocate for ourselves. What changes would need to be made in order to proactively inform property owners of any type of change to adjacent properties? Thank you for your time, Robert Hendrickson." Next email is, subject line, Banner Farm Road, from Haley Lettery. "Good evening. My name is Haley Lettery, and my family has taken up residence off of Banner Farm Road since 2002. Previously, we resided in Arden and have seen our fair share of the constant changes Western North Carolina has experienced over the years. This includes the destruction of upbringing people to this part of the state to begin with, mountains themselves. It is so disheartening to see all the beautiful land around this area constantly facing destruction. Arriving by that big, open, beautiful pasture, excuse me, driving by that big, open, beautiful pasture on Banner Farm every morning makes my day, and I would hate to see that beautiful view turned into more housing units. Our town is becoming more and more populated, and once, in the once-quiet country setting, is turning into just another city. Aside from the aesthetics, we would be pushing more students into local schools. The infrastructure does not exist to cater to so many more students, and this would lead to the need to tear down more land and build more buildings just to accommodate this. We also need to realize the negative effects this move would have on local wildlife and our natural resources. While I understand that, quote, 'business' doesn't always care about things like this, it really should. This is the home of many different creatures, and it is, and it is their home just as much as it is ours, if not more. Building these housing units would be irresponsible and, quite frankly, extremely disappointing. Disappointing that other locals that may possibly vote for this change would agree to do so and irresponsible for the reasons listed above. Please take our concerns of your neighbors into consideration, and please choose not to construct this housing unit. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. Haley Lettery, 207 Leanne Lane Horseshoe, North Carolina." Next one is, subject line, Planning Board Meeting. This is from Mark Williams at AgHC. It's addressed to myself and reads, "Since the capacity for the planning board meeting will be very limited this evening, please accept and share my written comments on behalf of the Agribusiness Henderson County, AgHC, as part of the public comment. My hope is to attend Thursday, the Thursday council meeting in person and speak, but in the event, I don't get the opportunity. Written comments will be provided as well. There's a list of items. Our organization's focus is to preserve and grow agriculture and ag-related businesses and business, which directly aligns with four out of the six of the overall goals in the Mills River Proposed 2040 Comprehensive Plan. We have roughly seventy private members with ten located within a half-mile of the property being considered for rezoning. This next area is underlined for emphasis. All of our Mills River members oppose the rezoning because it will bring residential development closer to them, making for an incompatible mix. These existing agribusinesses provide over seven hundred jobs for the community. They have invested multiple millions of dollars and pay property taxes that enable the town to provide necessary and desired services to Mills River residents. AgHC and Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development each play a part, and Bold Rock choosing to locate in Mills River, and AgHC was directly responsible for Bold Rock and Tri-Histo locating their operation in Schoolhouse Road. This is underlined for emphasis. The town embraced each project, and no zoning change was required for either. As part of these economic development projects, AgHC led in getting sewer, water, and natural gas extended to Schoolhouse Road, which cost in excess of a million dollars, but zero expense was incurred by Mills River. Golden Leaf Economic Development Grant, Henderson County, Kankriq Sewer District, and the city of Hendersonville paid for the infrastructure improvements to bring in the existing businesses, but with the understanding and expectation that other similar business operations would be added as a result. The market value of real estate along Schoolhouse Road is cost prohibitive for residential development, but feasible for ag-related or light industrial operations, which it has been equipped to handle. Existence of production agriculture is dependent on supporting ag-related operations such as packing, processing, storage, agritourism, et cetera. Schoolhouse Road, Banner Farm Road, and Haywood Road form a triangle and that serve as the heart of the traditionally ag community and that support the remaining fertile fields in the perimeter of the town. This is considered AgHC's primary for attracting clients who we are currently entertaining. Both AgHC and Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development have limited properties suitable for economic development projects, and removal of the Schoolhouse Road parcels will negatively impact opportunities, including ones presently being considered. The proposed rezoning not only limits potential for suitable future projects, but the change to, this final portion is underlined for emphasis, but the change to residential zoning seriously threatens existing businesses and specifically limits any possible expansion for Bold Rock. Thanks, Mark. Mark Williams, Executive Director, Agribusiness Henderson County." That's all we have for emails. That's all I have. Let me rephrase that. Oh, I'm sorry. I do have those. Okay. Okay, one more, a couple more. This is a subject request, R21-02, for rezoning of two tracts of the old Joe Lee Hefner Farm, from Jimmy Cowan, email to the info@mill river.org. "Dear Town Council and Planning Board, I was surprised this past Tuesday, April 13th, the season's rezoning signs on the old Joe Lee Hefner Farm at the intersection of Schoolhouse Road and Banner Farm Road. The first thing I did was call Town Manager Daniel Cobb to find out what was going on. He told me it was a recommendation from the planning board, and he had direction from council to seek rezoning on the property from light industrial to low-density residential. I think we call that MR30. The proposed property includes what's left of the Joe Lee Hefner Farm and also the section of it that was sold to Bold Rock Hard Sire to go into an existing building built for a vegetable packing house. These two parcels are pins 9631-806531 and 9631-901-838, according to tax records. I can't attend the public meeting and hearing, but I would appreciate my comments read aloud and filed as part of the official record on this subject. Mr. Chicago did not say who exactly was making the recommendation for rezoning, other than it came from the planning board and that council acted on the recommendation to start the process. I don't know the background, but I seriously, seriously doubt that landowners are asking for rezoning, and I don't understand how rezoning this very prime land to a low-density residential could be proven to be in the town's best long-term or short-term interest. Some reasons I believe this are, number one, the property is in prime location with light industry and commercial businesses already around it, with neighborhood commercial zoning on the property adjoining it. I need to remind the town that you yourself looked into buying the property adjoining Joe Virgin Farm for a town center before you bought in the current location, but you felt you couldn't afford it at the time. If the trend is to zone this corridor residential, then Town Hall would have, Town Hall would have stuck out like a sore thumb or wouldn't have been possible at all. Number two, the corridor, including these two tracts of land, have water, sewer, natural gas, high-speed internet, good soils, and good access. Someone, please explain to me why MR30 is the highest and best use of this property. I really like to hear that. I would really like to hear that. I think some expert real estate witnesses might argue differently. Number three, one of these tracts proposed to be rezoned residential is already an existing thriving business. What is the logic in this? We are saying we don't appreciate Bold Rock. Are we saying we don't appreciate Bold Rock in the community? When I drive by, I see more cars in the grocery store sometimes, so I'd say a lot of people support them. Number four, all four corners of the intersection of Banner Farm Road and Schoolhouse Road are very valuable now and will be in the future for commercial or industrial-type businesses. One corner already has thriving businesses on it. One corner is the school. One corner is residential. That's because the house was built almost a hundred years ago, and with maintenance, is still usable even though it is owned by industrial. The corner, the other corner is part of one of the tracts currently in question. That corner, for sure, along with the rest of the property, is far too valuable for other uses to restrict to low-density residential, not to mention that it already has very thriving, and might I add, good and badly-needed car repair business behind it. Number five, if the town were going to rezon something around that area residential, I fail to see why the Lowe's warehouse land wouldn't have been rezoned residential houses, residential since houses are along its back property line were impacted by the development. I'm not saying that the property should have been rezoned either, because that land was for sale for years, and anyone could have bought it. After years on the market, the purchaser just happened to be a developer for Lowe's. The town itself sold land to Mills River Brewery very close to the land in question, and the house is right across the fence from the new brewery. That house is well-kept and has a nice brick house that's been there and been there and lived in for fifty-plus years. Let's pick the speck out of our own eye as town before we get too carried away trying to fix problems that aren't there. Number seven, you allowed an orphan to go in, which was proven to be a pretty good neighbor across from Wedgewood and the school. I think that was a good idea and is fine, but the point is somewhere, somewhere, light industrial has to be close to residential. That's how it works. Number eight, there is a light industrial zoning like the two properties currently in question are zones across the road, down the road in one direction, down the road in the other direction, and those aren't on prominent busy intersections. Number nine, one parcel in question has been for sale for years now and marketed as light industrial. Why the rezoning now? Why not last year? Why not two years or five years ago? It looks to me like somebody saw a sign go up and woke up and realized that something might be done with that farm one day as the area grows, besides growing vegetables, cows, hay, and providing a pretty backdrop for pictures. We need to light, we need light industry and commercial businesses in Mills River. Most of those need water, sewer, natural gas, high-speed internet, and easy access. Research, research shows that these type of businesses require a lot less in services than they pay in property taxes to the town. I won't quote percentages because those can be argued, but the fact that they require less in services than they pay can't be argued. Now, let's talk about residential. For every dollar, on average, a homeowner pays in property taxes. There is well over a dollar required in services, county and local. This can't be argued. The houses and people are coming in and will continue to come. Let's set aside some land for industry and businesses that will help support the infrastructure and services those people moving here need. We, as a town, can't keep rezoning and having knee-jerk reactions each time land is sold or someone decides to do something with vacant land. Number eleven, we can all dream that someone would come along and buy it to farm or just to mow it and invite the public to come and picnic on it like a public park, but that isn't reality. I think those people in favor of this need to step forward and speak up with their reasons why they think the change would benefit all of Mills River. In my opinion, those reasons would need to outweigh all the reasons mentioned above, and maybe some I haven't thought of yet, before rezoning takes place. If there is a shadow of doubt whether this is the right decision, council should at least toss around, toss this around a while before making a decision. What's the rush? Does someone think you've been sleeping and waited too late? It sure seems like the timeline is laid out in a rush, rush method to get something passed before everyone in Mills River that would care about the issue even finds out about the proposal. I thank you for what you do, council. You have to make tough decisions. It seems to me that this isn't one of those tough decisions. I encourage you to leave the zoning as it is for the greater good of all of us. Jimmy Cowan, 103 Brandy Knoll Drive, Mills River. The next one, we have, subject line, Public Comment, Planning Board, April 20th, 2021. This is from Brittany Brady, the Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development. Public Comment, Planning Board, April 20th, 2021. "My name is Brittany Brady, and I am the President and CEO of the Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development. On behalf of our organization, I am providing comment to speak out against the rezoning impacting the property at 72 and 80 Schoolhouse Road. Our mission is to create and retain quality jobs in Henderson County, and the proposed rezoning will put both job creation and retention in jeopardy. While we understand the comprehensive plan for 2040 suggests a different zoning, supporting local industry now, emphasis, is why we seek your consideration to keep industrial zoning. Bold Rock located in Henderson County in 2015 at 72 Schoolhouse Road and industrially-zoned site. They expanded their operations from Nellisford, Virginia, and did not seek incentive support. Instead, they contributed over three, three-and-a-half million dollars and created over forty production jobs and twenty taproom jobs. Today, their tax bill exceeds $3.9 million, and they have maintained those positions with plans to add headcount. In addition, they bring in substantial sales tax each year and contribute back to the local community. Their production in Mills River accounts for seventy percent of their overall production as a company, bringing them to the number, number-two cider company in the nation. That did not happen by accident. Both Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development, AgHC, worked with the Boulder, work with the Bold Rock and Mills River Council at the time to make sure that Bold Rock could succeed here. The support of the council and the community allowed Bold Rock not only to excel with their production location, but become a destination for the community. By rezoning to a non-industrial use, Mills River is making one of their key taxpayers and employee, employers out of compliance. This prohibits necessary modifications and expansion capabilities for this growing industry. The neighboring property at 80 Schoolhouse Road provides expansion potential that Bold Rock has shown interest in. Our rezoning would land Bold Rock and, rezoning would land, land-lock Bold Rock and cripple their opportunity to grow here. Additionally, the surrounding industrial corridor along Schoolhouse Road and Banner Farm Road that the Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development and AgHC support would be placed even closer to residential. We have worked in concert with Mills River Council to make sure that businesses locate in a supportive community location. The 72 Schoolhouse Road location for Bold Rock was a team effort with Henderson County Partnership, AgHC, and Mills River Council. It took a lot of time and energy to be sure they could grow in Mills River in an industrial corridor. I recently read a comment that council stated Mills River has eighty-five to ninety percent of industrial land in the county. Based on our industrial sites inventory, Mills River currently has twenty-six percent of available, emphasis added, industrial sites in the county, with some sites lacking critical infrastructure. By taking these two sites out of the industrial zoning, the opportunity to support and grow local industry in Mills River becomes even more of a challenge. I encourage you to think of the positive impact industry has on Mills River and work to secure the tax base and employment opportunities your citizens enjoy. Brittany Brady, President and CEO, Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development." Next one is, subject line, Development. From Bob. It states, "While it is not practical to ask that all development be stopped in Mills River, it is reasonable to ask that tax or other incentives not be given unless Mills River is willing to do the same for the rest of us. Also, the added cost of infrastructure to support development should be borne by the developer, just as we, as taxpayers, have to. Lastly, it also needs to be addressed the possibility of a developer, after building a structure, might leave Mills River earlier than proposed. Hence, the tax benefits lost leaving Mills River to cover the cost." Now, I think that's all right. Okay. That's all we have for written comments.
Okay, Arlie, do you have the list for public comment? I can take it. Okay, so what we'll do is I'll just go down the list, and I will call you to the podium, and if you will, please just come up and state your name and the group that you are representing. Are we sure that the microphone is on? Okay, so just please do speak clearly into the microphone so that everyone can hear you as well as those folks online. And do you remember that Daniel will be imposing the three-minute time limit? So first, we have Danny Maxwell. Mr. Alexander, if you don't mind, would you mind to come to the microphone? That three-minute limit will be for public comment at this time. Correct? Until we get to that item on the agenda. Is that correct? Okay, next is Chris Cormier. Is that correct? I'm sorry if I butchered your name.
It's Cormier.
Cormier.
I'd like to reserve my comments till later on in the show here to be involved with the rezoning.
And you are also a landowner?
I'm representing with the landowners, yeah.
Next up, and I'm relying on my high school teacher's expertise to discern this, I think it's Dusty Ellison. Property owner as well. Okay, next we have Del Reese. Excuse me? For, are you a property owner of the part that's in question? The rezoning is specifically the property on Banner Farm Road. I think its address is 72 and 80. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, so that, that is not what, that is not the other issue, so if you'd like to make comment about that, now would be the time for you to do that. Okay, so you are not going to make any public comment tonight. Okay, next up is Ronnie Redden.
Hello, I'm Ronnie Redden, and I live at 307 Banner Farm Road in a home shay tree garage, which is adjacent to the land that you're, is in question to be rezoned. I really don't understand how you can rezon somebody's property and limit their business. The, they came and Bold Rock come and bought that land, and they invited by all the rules, done everything they were supposed to do, and now you're not going to let them expand, you're not going to let them do anything. And I wonder if you're going to do the same thing to me somewhere down the road. You're going to put restrictions on me to what I can do with my business. And that very concerns me. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Redden. Okay, next on the list looks like Joel Crook.
I'm not the property owner. Gerald here is the property owner for the, the property that we want to purchase, but it's tangent rezoning that we're looking for. And we'd like to put a, I'll call it a warehouse, was warehouse offices. I've got a, I've got a picture of the proposed building that we'd like to place there. I don't know whether everybody can view this or not, front and rear, so I don't really know how to place it. I'm a business. It's a small, it's a small company that we run. And it'd be good business for Mills River, and for the location would be perfect for us, and it'd be an asset to the community. What we do is we sell power generation equipment, so Cummins, Polar, we sell lightning protection equipment. We had employed approximately twenty people there at this some business. We would have some tractor-traders coming into there, making deliveries, which would be on the backside. There'd be no exposed lift doors on the front side. I'm very particular. It'd be a beautiful building. It'd be landscaped beautifully. And when I say we bring in some tractors for delivery, there's very few that we, that we actually bring in. It's not a, it's not a bunch of trucks. Could be one to two a day, maybe one to two a week. Well, that's, that's what we do. We do a lot of ourselves. This is internet-based, and then we have a sales team. We do a lot of ourselves, this is internet-based, and then we have a sales team that runs out of that facility. And we employ primarily just engineers there. And we work, we ship across the US.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify something? His comment, that was regarding the C under new business, the commercial subdivision, is that what he was commenting about?
No, that was, that was item A under new business.
Oh, okay, that's, okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to correspond with which one went where, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. No, that is, that is concerning the, the purchase or other, yes.
Yeah, because we're wanting to purchase a property that, from Anointed Word Church. There's about two acres of property there that we'd like to purchase. And for the reason that I'd stated, so we can put office warehouse there on the, under that property. And I think it'd be mentally, memory evasive. You know, and I think, like I said, it would definitely be an asset for the community. Because like I said, I'm very particular, it'd be a beautiful building and it'd be good for all the folks there, the local community. And
Okay, thank you, sir, that's a perfect segue to Daryl Ellis, who is up next.
I'm representing the owner, which is the Anointed Word Church. And with the COVID situation as it is, churches have realized a drop in attendance and, and it's been tough for churches. And we, as a church, decided that we wanted to sell this two acres that we have that's excess that we don't really need in order to pay off our church building. And the daycare, which is just two properties down from it on the corner near the Glenn Marlowe School entrance, is, I think, already his own commercial. And currently, the property is MR30. I talked to Mr. Marlowe across the road and he has no problem with the warehouse or the type of building that we'd like to put in. He said that he had no problem with it as far as, because it would be minimal traffic and just one or two trucks, maybe a day or even less. And it's a beautiful building, I have known Joel for quite a while and he has, he's a quality guy and he's a straight-up guy and he's a man of integrity. And, and I believe that he will maintain his property well and take good care of the area. And, and I don't think it will be a nuisance at all to anyone. And I believe it would be actually a blessing to employ some more people, plus, right now, this piece of property is tax-exempt because it belongs to the church. But there would be more tax revenue for the, for the county and for the city if Joel was, were, was allowed to put this in. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, up next, I have listed Tim Wolfe.
My name's Brian Golden, I'm an attorney, I represent Bold Rock Partners LP. Tim Wolfe is a representative of that. And so we would like to reserve our comments for new business number B, the rezoning request R2102.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have Kirby Johnson. He's not here. And again, I have Mr. Alexander, are you waiting to speak? And Brian Golden?
Yeah.
That, that's, okay, you jumped up in a different spot there on me, okay. All right, those are all the folks that we have listed for public comment tonight. So at this time, I will close our public comment session. So what we'll enter into next is our old business. And what I would like to remind the planning board in both items under old business, we as a planning board serve only as an advisory committee. We do not make any decisions regarding this, we don't approve it, we don't disapprove it. We simply send a recommendation to town council, the recommendation to approve or the recommendation to deny. That is our only role. So the first, first up, we do have the Banner Farm Road Special Use Permit, which is 21-01. And again, our role tonight would be either to make a recommendation to, a recommendation to town council to approve or deny that. Daniel, you told us that you do not have any additional information for this, is that correct?
I have not received anything, Mr. Moore is here, you may have additional information to add, but just sort of in summary, what you said is accurate, this came before you previously and the board took no action, and so there is a time limit on that expires next week. So tonight, you can, you can take it and make it a decision to make a recommendation where you cannot make a recommendation, and if you don't, then it'll go on town council in May as assumed as a favorable recommendation.
Mr. Moore, did you bring additional information with you tonight for us?
No, I think you have, this is our third trip here. I would like to ask the question, March 16th. I think y'all made a motion, somebody seconded, took a vote to send it on to the council with no comment. But council sent it back, so I'm a little confused, I never got the explanation from that comment.
Are you talking about the recommendation, the recommendation, the motion to take no action?
No.
Oh, from town council?
From town council.
To send it back to us?
To you all, after you had already voted on it. To send it on with no comment.
That would be a question for town council. I think that is at, they're allowed to do that at the point that we were in the process. But again, I can't
You voted on it, so that's, that's why I'm trying to get clarification. Why would you vote on it, send it on, then send it back?
We voted, we voted, we voted to take no action, so they sent it back to us tonight. Tonight, we either, if we do not take an action tonight, then it's considered an approval.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sort of.
Sort of. Okay, yeah, so tonight is it, tonight's the last shot with us, we either recommend to approve, recommend to deny. If we do nothing, it is considered a recommendation to approve.
You know, I made that clear in the March 16 meeting for clarification that it would be sent on to council for vote. And I think almost everybody agreed that it was going to be able to go on the council for a vote, not to be sent back.
Actually, there was some discussion during that meeting that it could come back to us. When we did discuss that, that it would likely come back to us.
I think Mr. Carlin even clarified that too, you know, kind of in a defense saying, we're going to lose all our rights. It gets sent on, it gets voted on, so then it didn't get voted on, it got sent back to y'all, so we can waste more time, so.
And again, I can't speak on behalf of council, but I know it's back with us tonight to make some sort of decision.
Okay.
So, okay. All right, so I would ask the planning board, again, like you said, we have seen this a couple of different times.
I guess my question is, is at this point, and for those who only see the back of my head online, I'm Heath Wiggins. But, and I apologize for the view for the back of my head, it's not pretty. But question really quickly, though, are we still at an incomplete status is the question? That was why it went forward and then went back and wasn't voted on. Is that where you're, where we still stand is an incomplete status of the application?
Yep, the application itself is, was completed and that, that was, that was done according to the ordinance. There were a couple of design elements that were not included in the packet for consideration, like the water plan, the sewer plan, things of that nature, and those have not been provided. And so you can make a decision based on that or not. I mean, those, these gentlemen have a right to move forward, whether or not they've submitted a complete application to the board or not.
Okay, for some point of clarification, I guess, on that, I, my understanding was is that it was an incomplete, it's not an incomplete application without those points?
The application material itself is, is complete, in other words, they've turned it in, they paid their fee, all that kind of good stuff. So that component of it is complete, they did not provide any additional information along the lines of utility plans or, I think utility plans was the big one, traffic impact analysis came up a couple of times. And so I guess, in essence, the application could be considered incomplete if you're looking at it from that point of view, as I did not provide the plan set that the board had requested.
But in section 154.082, we did provide you locations. It says, first sentence, approximate locations of proposed utility system. And we did provide that too. So that would be considered complete, because it plainly says in your code book, approximate locations.
I, I, I guess I need some clarification, I wasn't here in person last meeting, I was here on Zoom. I, I think we got lost in translation personally on, on this issue because my understanding, what we're doing here is we're either approving or denying a special use permit that would allow this land to be developed as multifamily, which it doesn't currently have. We're not approving a development at this time, they're not to that point. So I think we got kind of caught up in the, the thought process that we were approving a development that's not there yet. So there's some pieces that maybe we would like to see, but until they get approval to move forward with the development stage, they don't have those pieces and wouldn't spend the money on those pieces, which is understandable. What they're asking for is, is us to tell them if they can or can't do multifamily. And then that would, that would put them in the direction of, if we tell them they can't do multifamily, then they'd have to figure out what they're going to do. If we tell them they can do multifamily, then they can move forward. That's what we're, that's what, my understanding of what we had in the last couple of meetings was that's what we're doing, the development is not to that point yet for approval, we're just approving whether they can or can't do multifamily homes, which requires a special use permit. And I think that kind of got lost in translation, so I just wanted to clarify that, and maybe I misunderstood it.
Let me, let me clarify.
I think that's the best thing said yet, very well said.
Let me clarify that just a little bit, this board is not approving anything. In this particular instance, the, the purpose of this board's review in this whole application process is to provide a recommendation to town council. So what they're asking to do is allowable per the ordinance with the issuance of a special use permit. So they're not, they're not getting any sort of special privileges if they secure the special use permit. It's already listed in the code as something that they're allowed to do. The, the question that has come up, and to Mr. Moore's point, they, they've provided information sufficient to describe what's happening on a site, and I think the board has some more questions about off-site utilities and how it's actually going to have, get to the plant, property. So I want to be clear that they did provide the basic utility information on the site, but this board requested additional information off-site, and that we've not seen. So again, this evening, your role as the board is to offer a recommendation or not for or against this application. And then it'll go to town council, that public hearing is scheduled for May 13th. And if you choose to take no action, again, it will still continue in the process and they'll, they'll have their, their day with council in May.
Council cannot send it back again, though, correct?
That's correct.
And, and just for further clarification, Ryan, multifamily is allowed, but it has to have access to public water and sewer. And so that's kind of why there's been this hang-up on that, because currently there is not public water and sewer to that piece of property. And also in the code, which I have addressed before, it says that a multi-family, multifamily development documentation to ensure water and sewer systems proposed for the development have been designed by a professional engineer and have been approved by local and state agencies shall be submitted as part of the application.
And those can't be approved by utilities as far as water or sewer until you all approve it. They won't accept, I know, that's the reason your, your code book is so kind of off on procedurals.
And, and I apologize for that, I did not write that particular ordinance. I'm just, what I'm trying to do is make sure that, that I am impartial to any party. If, you know, this, this is your turn at bat, but there's going to be someone else down the road. And I'm going to read that whatever's in the code book and enforce it for them exactly. That if my mama came and did this tonight, I would tell her, have you followed what it says in the code book? And going back to the statement that you were reading from in particular, where you said you've provided the approximate location of proposed utilities, which indeed you have, but the rest of that statement says, including documentation approving the water, the proposed water and sewer systems from the appropriate local and state agencies. And that it has to be issued within the past six months and state that the public entity intends to accept both flow and maintenance. So that is also part of that statement that you read, and that's something that we don't have.
So it contradicts itself within that same section of approximate versus approval, and we can't get, even submit anything to the state until we get approval from the planning board or council or Henderson County.
Question, again, a clarification here, Daniel, is this something they can then petition for, to the council for a change to the ordinance?
That certainly could, I mean, that, anyone can do that at any time if they want to file an application for a text amendment. So, yeah, that's an option. Use your microphone, please, Jim.
Okay, I see, I think we're
You, you turned it off again.
Okay, is it working now?
If you hold it.
If I hold it, okay. I think we're at the same point. And I do not personally want to send something up to council that's going to be considered an approval at this point. And like I said, we don't approve anything, it's up to council. We, we, we are, I think, charged with going over the ordinance system. We usually go over everything line by line, and if it's not there, then fine. But at this point in time, I couldn't say, send it up as we did before or send it up with approval, I'd have to say no at this time because, again, it's up to council.
Any other comment from the board at this time?
I have, I have a question, two pages down, 158, under B sewer system, I could be wrong, but I want to look at it. Says the project shall have an approved waste disposal system designed by a registered engineer, if applicable. Is that the out that they're looking for? Because it's not we're, we're asking a lot of these guys to spend a lot of their money to design a sewer line that runs up right away?
All right, tell me where you're looking at that again.
158, page 158, and that's B, 11B.
That's actually under medical institutional care development?
FYIS, thank you.
You know, we've been running this around now, this is their third time coming to us. I, I think they need their day in front of town council. I think the best thing for us to do is, is send it along with no comment and let them have their opportunity to present it to council and, and get council to vote. And just us get out of the way of this, because we've been dancing with it for And just us get out of the way of this because we've been dancing with it for third time. And we seem to be going around in circles. So I think we need to do what we need to do to move this along for these guys.
I'm not understanding what you're requesting, that we just take a vote and send it away.
We take, I, I guess I'm making a motion that we take no action and just let it go on to council.
Didn't we do that? We, we've voted yes according to the ordinance. When are we, I would say. It's our job to, 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 to make sure that they, it's in compliance with the ordinances. And it's not in compliance with the ordinances, but it's not our job to approve it. If council wants to prove it, as you know, you served on council many, many years, you can do it. We, we not approving it, but I, I don't, I don't want to go on record as approving incomplete application because it's going to come back to haunt us.
May I ask what's not, and what's not complete, why it's incomplete? We, we did the application and it's, you know, it's been submitted. We've.
It also says, you know, we need all this other documentation about sewers and all, and we don't have that.
We can't even apply, apply for sewer or water for approval until it gets approved by the town. So we can't even do that. Like we were talking, it contradicts itself. We did comply with section 154 dash 082 for approximate, approximate locations. We did submit that and we did give approximate locations.
The documentation that we had to start with, the little map, I guess you could say it's approximate, but it's, it's not specific at all. But I, I don't think.
Our engineer came back after the first meeting. He did come back with some drawings after y'all wanted that and he did submit those.
I haven't seen those.
And, and it sounds to me like that we are kind of at an impasse with the planning board. And we could sit here and talk about this all night, which we've already done for several previous meetings. And that's not going to benefit anyone. I think the best thing that we can do at this time is do a person by person vote. And that way, at least everyone will be documented as to what their opinion is, whether they are in favor of making a recommendation to approve or a recommendation to deny. And that way we will know what we want to send to town council.
We, we have a motion on the floor, though. We either need to second it, withdraw it. We need to clear that motion before we go.
If it helps move this along, I'll, I made the motion, I'll, I'll withdraw it. And, and we can do the vote by vote thing and then see where we stand.
Sounds great. Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm just going to go around the table. And if you will either say approve or deny, that would be very helpful.
Can we go first?
James.
Approve.
Oh, hang on just a second. Absolutely. So we are either making a recommendation that town council approve this project or a recommendation that town council deny this project. We don't actually vote on it. Town council will make the final decision.
I thought we started off the meeting or the comment section, or no, I'm sorry. Next on the old business agenda, that you were not to vote on it. You were to send comments to council. But now you changed it where you're going to go back and vote.
No, we have to make a recommendation and that recommendation is based on numbers. So.
Thought you had to make recommendations, like.
Right, whatever this vote is, that's what will determine the recommendation.
I don't think that a yes or no vote, I don't want to vote yes or no on, on the project. Because I am, believe it or not, all in favor of housing. I'm just talking about the application, the application as it's submitted. But.
I do want to make a note too, that what I was reading is under multi-use. It's the page before. It's the exact same link though.
So what the board is, is responsible for doing tonight is making a recommendation that this project, this special use permit be approved, which would authorize this project or this permit request be denied, which would deny the special use permit and the project would not happen. So, you know, I hate to be frank, but there's no point in going back through the ordinance and, and sort of relitigating all of the details of the plan at this point. Because they've given you some information. You would like to see more information. You don't have it at this time. The time limit is going to expire next week for this board's action. So if you want to recommend it, majority of the board would have to do that. If you want to recommend deny it, recommend that it be denied, then the majority of the board will vote for that. If there's an impasse or a tie or what have you, or, or just not a vote, it will go forward as no action. And as Jim pointed out, that's considered a favorable recommendation by the board.
Okay, so James has, has said that he approves.
I approve.
I deny.
I deny.
I deny.
We are taking a vote and the discussion time is over. Thank you, sir.
Please remember to use your microphone so that people can hear you.
Okay, so the vote is four to deny, three to approve. So the recommendation that we will send to town council is a recommendation to deny this specialty permit. Okay, so the next action that we have to address on our agenda tonight is the Making Mills River Comprehensive Plan. Again, we do not have to take any action, but we can if we are comfortable with doing so. So it looks like Alan's going to give us a little.
Very brief comments.
Brief comment.
Yes. We've, we've come a long way with this. So this plan was started in 2018 or 2019, I should say. We spent a lot of time last year working with a revitalized steering committee, had about a dozen meetings with them, some very good public engagement and stakeholder engagement around this plan. Its primary function is to be a policy guidance document for the town and not to be a regulatory document. But it does help guide the town's decision making with respect to land development, infrastructure and other types of economic and community development issues. We, as, as staff and team are recommending this, this has gone to the steering committee. And at their meeting this month, they did recommend that the planning board and town council adopt this document and approve this document. So the steering committee has completed its work and we're now, we now have this before you. This is substantively taken the same form for a while now. You, it looks different because we formatted the document to make it look nice and to have it be something that we were proud of, of showing people and sharing. But there were a few minor comments that occurred at the steering committee meeting. But the, but by and large, all of the policies are in there, are the same as they were before. There are included as a part of the policy is the land use vision map. And that is to, again, not a regulatory map in terms of not having legal standing. But it, it is a guidance document to allow the town to use the map in ti, in terms of making zoning decisions and whether there's for any purpose or, or where it might prioritize its money in terms of supporting certain types of development. So that concludes my brief remarks. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those now.
So I know we've all looked at this comprehensive plan for a long time, bits and pieces and as a whole. So I would ask if anybody has any additional comments tonight, this would be the time to do it. If you have read through that, the, the final draft that we've been given and you are comfortable with making a recommendation to council for approval of that, we can do that at this time, but we don't have to. So I would entertain your thoughts on that.
Well, I would make a recommendation to approve it because I've been involved with it from day one for about two years now. And like he's, like Alan said, it's, it's a suggestion more than anything else. It's, it's not a rules, but it's a guideline that maybe council can follow in the years to come.
Will you use your microphone, please?
I, I will make the comment that I, you know, I was, I was not on it, on it as long, but I was involved in this process. And it's, you know, it's, it's a very well done document. And I, you know, it's, it's not perfect. There were, there are a couple of things that, you know, I, I may not have thought failed the right way. But overall, I think it's, it's a good document. And, and like you said, it's just a guideline. It's not, it's not legislation. It's not thing, you know. And I, I do know, do think that should be kept in mind as we move forward, that it is a guideline. It's not something that we've done to get stuff rezoned or moved around like Mr. Carlin said. But I, I think it's, it's a good, good direction for our town.
Okay. Not sure I can get this thing to work, but my concern, I, I also think it is a very good plan. I still think it's a very good plan until I, like Mr. Carlin, I saw today that it was being used not only before it's approved, but that it is being used to request rezoning. And I'm not sure what the property owners think about that request for rezoning. So we're going to talk about that in a few minutes. And if that's a better place to put it, but that is my one concern. I mean, I've tabbed some things. I could talk about some, you know, wording here and there. But I, I do think it's a good plan. But I'm, I just got a little worried today about how it'll be used.
Okay, so we can certainly, you know, we can talk about that or we can, can table that and approval of that for another meeting because it's not necessary that we do that tonight.
I motion.
I'm sorry, didn't Jim Foster make a motion? Did you mean to make that?
Well, yes, I, I did because I think it needs to go on the council. And that's the way they need to work out the, and the changes they want to make. Because we've made our changes.
Okay, so if there is a motion on the floor, then. Yes, we can, well, we can, we can, we can certainly. Right, so yeah, we can't make another motion, but we could continue to discuss.
There is, it's the makingmillsriver.org.com website. It's published on there, the draft document and the maps that are associated with it.
I just wanted to echo what a couple others have already said. It does seem like it's a good guiding document, like what's on page two of it. I do have a little bit of reservations on the map just because it is quite different than what it is owned right now. So we're going to have to do a lot of rezoning if we're, you know, if we're going by this 100%. And I, it seems like there's.
But I, I don't believe that was the purpose of that document. It wasn't, it wasn't to, to force rezoning. It's, it's a suggestive map of.
I understand, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Correct. The, the entire document is just a guiding document. It's not a suggestion to do anything necessarily. So, so Jim has a motion on the floor to, to go ahead and, would you restate your motion just so everyone is clear?
Well, my motion is to go ahead and send it to council for their consideration and changes as they deem necessary.
Making a motion to send it to.
Yes.
I second that motion. All in favor? All against? Okay. Now being James and Mr. Carlin. Okay, so that will move forward to town council as a recommendation to approve the 2040 Comprehensive Plan called Making Mills River.
Madam Chair, before we move on to the next item, I just wanted to take a minute and thank everyone who's been involved in this process. As Jim alluded to, it's been over two years now since we started on this and we've received hundreds of public comments, hundreds of responses to our surveys. Councilman Kasky and Mayor Shay Davis have been there since the beginning, have dedicated a lot of time, as have the rest of the steering committee members. So I just want everyone to, to hear that publicly, that a lot of, a lot of work has gone on, gone into this. And we're very proud to see it move on to the next step. I want to add one item, which is that, that there will be a public hearing before town council. For anyone who's here concerned or, or wants to be, participate further, that will be scheduled and there will be a hearing where they adopt it.
Thank you. And, and again, this, this has been a two-year process, numerous public meetings, numerous opportunities for public input. So there's been a lot of opportunity for that other than tonight.
Thank you.
Chair, before we proceed to the next items, B, would I be out of order in suggestion? We take up C or state where we're going to be on C because I've been informed that we're not going to be able to take any action on C. And I know this gentleman here is.
A is what we're not going to be able to take action on tonight.
Thank you. It's A is what we're not going to be able to take action on.
Okay.
Regardless, that's where we are. And because there was a procedural issue, can they opt to move forward regardless of that? Or must that be completed?
No, 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 the, the, so what happened for the benefit of everyone in the room? This is my fault. I didn't tell you guys this sooner, but I just discovered it today. There's three things that have to happen before rezoning hearing can, can occur. One of those is the property owners and adjacent owners have to be notified in writing with a letter. The second thing is it has to be advertised in the newspaper and then also the property has to be posted. And all those things have to happen no less than 10 days prior to the hearing, but no more than 25 days prior to the hearing. And considering this particular instance where I forgot to post the property, we missed a step. And so I apologize to you folks, but we need to delay this, delay this discussion until the board's next meeting so we can get it. Yes, it's, I don't, let me take a day real quick. It would be.
May 4.
May the 4th. Yes. Yep, here. I apologize for that.
Okay, does that make sense?
No, we, we have to do that before we can move forward.
Okay. Okay, so what we're going to do real quickly, so it's been a little over an hour. So we're going to take a quick 10-minute break for anyone who needs to use the restroom. It's down the hall, down the hall. And then we will reconvene in 10 minutes, please. it's down the hall, down the hall, and then we will reconvene in 10 minutes, please. So if you're outside waiting, there are some seats inside, if you'd like to come and take those seats. Okay, we're going to go ahead and reconvene. We are going to, just as a matter of procedure, we need to make a motion for our action tonight for the Anointed Word Church. So we need a formal motion to table that for our next meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Ryan edged his way in there and made a formal motion to table the rezoning request for Anointed Word Church for our next meeting.
Okay.
Are you going to second that motion? We got to vote on that.
Oh, yeah.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. So we are going to move on to the next item in new business. And just as a point of transparency, I am an adjoining property owner of this particular parcel of land, so I will be recusing myself from this particular discussion. I won't make any comments, no voting. I'm actually going to leave the room. So my assistant chairperson, Jim Foster, will take over from here, and you guys can come fetch me when we are finished with this.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I would like for Daniel to, since I just received this, the information on this, about 3 o'clock this afternoon, so I would like for Daniel to bring us up to speed on what, what we're going to be talking about, discussing.
Sure.
Over to the microphone, and I can't, I can't understand you. Yeah?
Without proper notice, this matter shouldn't be before this commission. And I'm happy, I brought the statute with me, and I can read it, and it says, "The property owner and the adjoining property owners shall be given notice." We got one as an adjoining property owner, and I can show you that notice, but there was never notice sent to my client as the property owner. Thus, we would object to this board hearing this matter tonight until all three of the boxes are checked, and that is proper notice, proper advertisement, and posting of the property. That would be my note, my motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, can I do you have something to?
Yes, on the same issue, and Mr. Golden and I have discussed this previously, and I represent the adjoining owners, Dusty Ellison, Preston Johnson, and Danny Maxwell. In a like sense, they did not receive an owner's notice. They received an adjoining property owner's notice. And the letter they received didn't even have their name stated on the letter. It just said, "The adjoining property owners." The envelope, of course, had their name on it. But more importantly, from the legality of notice provision, the, the notice is required by your own ordinance and by state statute to be mailed to the affected property owners at their record address with the Henderson County Tax Office. And in my case, the record address of my clients with the tax office is a post office box 1254 Hendersonville. And the physical address of the property is 80 Schoolhouse Road. Well, I have filed a written objection to the notice, which I'll probably have, and I did not attach to that objection the envelopes, but I have them here. The, the envelopes that were, these notices were mailed to my clients in, were sent to... Excuse me, one second. It's a Comfort Lane address. 132 Comfort View Lane. They were not even mailed to them at the correct address. And because of that, they, them actually receiving those was delayed. They didn't know until, I think, Friday of last week that, that this was even in process. Had to contact me out of state, and by the time they got hold of me yesterday, the first day, we had to start preparing for this. And just quite frankly, not only the spirit of your statute and the case law, but just constitutional due process requires that owners affected by zoning, rezoning proceeding have more notice and an opportunity to prepare and present their position. So we contend to you that the notice is inadequate as a matter of law. It's also just inadequate as a matter of equity. We object to the notice, and we ask that you not conduct a hearing tonight until proper notice can be later given. And that's just, you know, obviously preliminary contents, because that might take care of the whole meeting.
Okay. I tend to agree with you, but Daniel, would you like to comment on that?
Mr. Alexander summed it up well, as well as Mr. Golden. Their notice requirements are what they are. We did notice the properties. We, we did not change the address E to property owner. We, we have an adjacent letter template that we use for all rezonings, and we sent it to the addresses that we had on file. Those apparently were incorrect addresses, so they didn't receive notice in time. But the letters did go out prior to the 10-day deadline, and the property was posted, and the advertisement in the paper did run. All that is accurate. So I'm happy to go through the requests. If it's the board's pleasure, I mean, you, you tell me what you want to do.
Well, I have one other thing that, maybe this is not the time to bring it up. The signs that's posted on the property. I know for a fact that other municipalities around the country, those little signs over there are just not adequate to me, and that's all I'm going to say on that. But I think we, personally, it's up to, up to the board, but I think personally, we, we do need to delay this, because I just got the information. As you know, at 3 o'clock this afternoon, there's quite a bit of information to digest in a short period of time ahead. And so I certainly, myself, would not be in a position to vote intelligently, I don't think, on one way or the other tonight.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd be happy to make a motion then to table it.
Yeah, I have a motion to table it until a later date, until all requirements are met, to have a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'll go get our chairman, and I'll turn it back over to him.
Okay, so our final action for the night is looking at a commercial subdivision. So if, Daniel, if you could give us an overview of what that is, that would be great.
Sure. There are several different types of subdivisions permissible within the town's subdivision standards. They include minor, major, non-standard, and family. For residential purposes, a subdivision is considered major if it's 10 or more lots. However, when it is a commercial use, there is no minimum lot requirement. Any subdivision of a commercial property is considered a major subdivision, and thus is reviewed accordingly. In this instance, there's no development proposed, so there's no development standards to comply with. Essentially, you're looking at this to ensure that they apply, they comply with the lot standard, which they have according to their proposed subdivision plaque. So with that said, SAP recommends approval of the application that's submitted. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions?
I think Daniel probably pretty well covered it, but I do have a comment. I had it here somewhere. The application, if I remember right, the application was dated in December?
Right. They, they submitted an application with no payment and no subdivision plaque.
Oh, okay. Of course, again, I just found out about this at 3 o'clock this afternoon, so I'm glad if you're saying that it meets everything, but I don't know that. I couldn't even make out from the tiny map exactly where it's at.
Yeah, we, on occasion, we receive applications that are dated months earlier, because people filled it out and never did anything with it at home. In this sense... In this instance, this was emailed to us and around the end of December, I believe, I replied back that we need the fee paid as well as the subdivision plan included in the application before we could do anything with it. And that didn't come in until, it looks like March 5th is when they paid. So we've had this application since then and you all didn't meet your first meeting in April. So that's why we're discussing it this evening.
I can get this application until I sit down here in this seat tonight. So how can I make a recommendation to approve an application? In hours' time. Didn't he know where it was at?
So essentially, this particular piece of property, this subdivision is simply... It's not going... The zoning doesn't change and it's already zoned as a commercial piece of property. So it's simply taking one large parcel and splitting it into two parcels, much like... Was it Circle K that we did a similar thing with? Yes.
It's... This is effectively a family subdivision. It's two brothers who are doing it. However, they don't fall under that exemption because it's commercial property. And so it's fallen under the commercial development standard. So they're taking a 4.4 approximately acre site, cutting it roughly in half. One brother will get one piece, another brother will get the other piece. They are... They didn't include a 30-foot driveway easement to get to the rear property, which is the minimum required for subdivisions and landlocked parcels like this. So again, it does comply with the subdivision standards.
If I understand it correctly, it's similar to what we did for the assisted living down here on 191. We subdivided that so they could build the building on the back and the front is still there. That's what I understand you're talking about, yeah.
I can't speak to that particular case, but it sounds similar.
And it looks like the current property owners are the same as the applicants, so they're both in agreement. We both own this piece of property and we both would like to officially split it, pretty much.
That's right.
I'm happy to make a motion that we accept it.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it. I just want to clarify before I do that. There's no zoning changes, right? I understand that. The zoning stays the same for it? Yeah, then I'll make a second that we approve the division.
No zoning change, no ownership change, no development proposed, purely a subdivision of a single parcel.
Okay, so we've had a motion and we've had a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we will approve that commercial subdivision. So now we move on to additional items. Do we have any additional items tonight, Daniel?
We do not.
We do not. You know what time it is.
Make a motion. We adjourn.
I'll second.
Now we have a motion to adjourn by Jim as seconded by... Was that you, Ryan? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, folks. I appreciate your time tonight.